Ladies first.
Thank you. It is October, March 5th, 2020. Board of Selectmen meeting combined with the Finance Committee, budget meetings.
6:30, we're opening our meeting.
Just one more time for the cameras at home. The Board of Selectmen had appointed, Selectmen the camera to run with the budget this year, to be in charge of the budget, so I'm gonna turn the meeting over to Selectmen the camera.
Once again, for the department heads is that right now we're in the union negotiations, so the budgets that Todd Administrator asked everybody to present was maintenance budget, retain the staff and services, and any step or increases that an employee was entitled to, and then when we finish the negotiations, we'll add the cost of living increases of what it costs. Okay? Okay. Lillian, the town clerk, once again, great job at the election, everybody, thank you.
It gets hot on here. We only had people voting. It's just at a presidential primary, you have all the early votings that we had to take care of, the absentees, all the different force, different style of ballots for different parties, so more election workers. So early voting is here to stay, and it's gonna get complicated as the Secretary of State is gonna try to look into getting early voting for the local elections. So I'm not looking forward to it, but it's here to stay. So that's why I had to go up on my elections, like that's 7.35%. I had to purchase new image cast machines. I don't know if you've been able to use them, I know some of you voted early, but those are nice image cast machines. I had to go up $600 on the maintenance of, on them. The maintenance is closely around roughly 200 apiece. Again, early voting, I need more poll workers. Just this early voting session that I just had for five days here cost me $1,600. So it's a lot of money. So in October, it's gonna be 11 days, so it's gonna be a little bit over $2,000 just for that session. And he's also, he's gonna have early voting for the September primary for five days, so I hope he changes his mind on that, but it's coming.
Just a note on that, Maureen got a letter about the early voting, and we are going to not ask, are going to tell the Parker Commission that, you know, this has to be done, we can't tie up this room for 11 days, it just, just can't happen, so hopefully we give them enough notice.
I'm hoping that early voting can stay at the Ted Williams camp.
That's what I mean, yeah.
I'm just looking to use the small room, because that'll be perfect, probably a little bit bigger than this room, and, and I don't want to tie up this room.
We can't, I guess, we have so many meetings here now, we just can't tie up this room.
And Lillian was gonna go take it a little bit further to make sure we're planning well in advance to give the park what we're doing in advance, and we're gonna stage it out a little further for the request, so we make sure we're covering out, because a lot of times, the Parkers told me that their weddings have been two years in advance, we wanna make sure we really get ahead of it and let them know well in advance when we need that for.
So we're talking about year 2022, 2024, all the, even years 2026, that we need early voting at the Ted Williams camp. We, in 2018, Kelly was nice enough to have us be at the COA, but that was tight for 11 days, but we made it work. Let's see, registrations, I went up 6.57%. We outsourced the town census, that is going excellent. The reason why I outsourced it is because we are tied into the, the post office, so they can capture any forwarding addresses immediately, so that has really helped us. So that helps me with the voter list and keeping that active. Of course, the postage always goes up, now that people can vote early by mail, we have that option, of course absentee voting, and now we have automatic voter registration. So that means that anybody that goes to the Registry of Motor Vehicle, any state agencies, the Secretary of State has mandated that you can automatically register the vote. So that sends us to our queue, and we automatically register them, so of course that's more ink, more paper, more postage, so everything goes up. And on my town clerk, I had to go up on my dogs. We currently have 2,600 dog licenses that we registered for last year, and the list keeps growing, because we still have a lot of people that have not paid for 2016, 15, 17, those are in court, and 18. 2019, I'm still working on some of them, and so, of course, that means that I need more dog tags, and my printing went up because my increase in cartridges had to go up. Just the cartridge alone is $145 apiece for my, my little nice clock.
Is it gonna fit there?
No, my machine, it takes four cartridges.
Oh my God.
Yes. So that's my, that's my budget.
There's no, like, money from the state to help offset some of the early voting costs or anything?
Yes and no. It all depends what they will release us. They want us to put all our figures together and see what we spent for this past presidential primary, and depending what's in the budget, they'll send that out. But they did give us a small amount in 2018, which was $1,200. It's unfunded, unfortunately.
And for early voting for the president in October, I'm sure you're gonna even need more poll workers.
Yes, I am, I am. Do you have any questions?
Finance Committee, you got any questions?
Nope, pretty basic, thank you.
Bill's over here, Liv?
I'm just, I can ask Maureen actually, or, the codification, that's in last year's budget, right?
Codification was a capital.
That was capital?
Yeah, it was a capital project, but going forward, in order for us to get our maintenance and us to be updating legally every year, it's a fee to subscribe.
Yeah, so I think it's gonna be in my budget for that, so that's why it's in, the dues and subscriptions, I don't know, should we put a line item, a separate line item for that?
Oh, okay, I didn't even see that, I'm sorry, maintenance for database and codification, okay.
So we might not experience it for this year, depending on when they do their project, if it's finished, it might go in last year, but we wanted to be careful and have that placeholder in case they started at the end of the year.
Okay.
But you're, you're gonna enjoy it, once that codification gets into place, it's gonna be awesome. It's something that the town really needs.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I don't think I've met everybody, I'm Corinda Dunphy, HR Director. HR hasn't had its own budget before this year, so what I'm presenting isn't new line items, the HR salaries had fallen under the Selectmen's budget previously, and they're now being reclassified. So the three salaries are my own, and admin assistant, and a floating clerk who actually doesn't work in HR, but she reports to me, I coordinate where she goes with the department heads. So again, these are all existing positions, and then I think the HR expenses are pretty self-explanatory, but then a few jump to section, I think it's 911, on the pension. HR oversees the administration of the town's benefits, so you'll see the town's annual assessment for the pension, I actually have a handout on that. We pay it in July, once a year, and by doing that, we save about, I think, $21,000 instead of making it E2 payments. And the number's not exactly what you see on your budget sheets, because Todd adjusts for the Park and Landbell to pay their share. You also see the unemployment, which, you know, with the municipality, we don't pay a fee towards claims, we just pay as we go, if we have a claim, we have to pay it, we don't have much of that. As far as the health insurance goes, we're part of Gateway Health Group with other local municipalities, their rates are going up 3.9%, which is an improvement from last year, they went up 7.5%. And it's important to note that, you know, this is our current situation, but the number of employees and retirees fluctuates throughout the year, depending on, you know, we're gonna have open enrollment next month, and then there's always, like, qualifying events, like a dependent turning 26, who comes off his parents' plan, or marriage, new baby, that sort of thing. And then you'll see wellness programs, which is new from last year, but it's kind of something I've been excited about, because part of the funds are used for a new employee assistance program that we have, which is a much more robust program than we offered previously, and they've come in and do, they're coming in to do trainings, we just had a recent training for our first responders to do mental health awareness, so that's going well. Does anybody have any questions? Kind of raced through that, sorry.
What position did you say you're responsible for budget-wise, but they don't actually report to you?
A floating clerk.
The floating clerk?
Yeah. So when somebody needs her, like, if there's a vacation or whatnot, we send her to, pretty much gone in every department.
Gotcha. But do you get to do reviews and such for that person?
Yes, I mean, occasionally she does work, help me out, but I did recently write her review, she has done some work, community pass, she checks in with me all the time.
So was everything under the, the Town, the Board of Selectmen, the budget?
Yes.
Just, I guess I would have expected with contractual services, so that, for Board of Selectmen went up 20,000, but we didn't, we added 10,000 to HR budget, wouldn't that be expected to go down?
I guess that's something we can ask the town administrator.
So I will have to check the lines, because everything's not exactly equal, but I will maybe answer on that.
What was that for, George?
So if it came out of the Board of Selectmen's budget, the contract services was 10,000, it's 20,000 this year, but then we also have contract services for human resources at 10,000, so I would have expected...
One to be 10 and the other to be 10.
One to be 10 and 10.
Yeah.
And it's 20 and 10 is what you're saying.
So, yeah, we went up on both ends.
Yeah, that might just be an error on my part, but there's also a line for contracted services in general government, I just wanna make sure.
Oh, okay.
That I didn't pull it out of there.
It looks similar to what I was thinking. Could be $10,000 less.
It could be.
Yeah. That helps.
Thanks for taking my money away, George.
It should be noted, too, that, you know, the pension costs, you know, if you notice, but they, they did go up over the last year, I think it was almost a 10% increase, if I'm not mistaken. We had a lot of people, you know, retiring, you know, in the town, police officers and firefighters, and, you know, our town administrators, so that's why you're seeing an upswing. And the other reason for that is a lot of those were higher salary, you know, employees, so that's why you're seeing the jump in the, in the pensions.
George, some of that was, I pulled engineering services into contract services.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we pushed that back up, and that's for you, Rich, the other day, yeah, I got you.
So the 57 from last year?
Yeah, we pulled it back into there to make it more broad, we didn't wanna have...
Oh, I see, we moved it, we moved it from one to the other, so see it drop?
Yeah, I got you, yeah, 57.
I'm blaming Rich.
That's okay, you can blame me.
Well, that makes sense.
We're new the first time.
Well, just, let's just look at it again, just to be sure, and then, but yeah, I see what you're saying, I see 57 moved from there.
All right, will you have any other questions?
Nope, thank you, nice meeting you.
Okay, nice to meet you.
Thanks.
Thank you, thank you, Corinda.
I thought you saved 10 grand, too, you know?
I know.
What could have been?
It's a nice shot.
Hey, we'll try again. Okay, we got the town administrators, which is the Board of Selectmen, we start on 122, I guess, right?
Yeah, so we'll just go briefly, line by line, for questions. Town administrators, salary went down slightly, because at the beginning of the year, both Rita and I were on for a month together. And then the other ones are contractual changes, and then you'll see the next three lines were where we switched over to human resources from what was under, previously under, all under the Board of Selectmen, longevity, and...
What was the reasoning for taking them out of the Selectmen?
Corinda became a department head, she was a coordinator position, and then she became a department head, and then had someone report to her, where she hadn't had that previously, yeah, so we moved it to be under her, so she could receive the bills and look at them for things that were under her purview, instead of her giving them to me, and then me giving them back to her and asking if those are right.
Right.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Auditing and actuarial services, we were on an every other year, but now we're on an every year, every year basis, and this is the estimated cost for next year, based on Powers, I forgot, Powers and Parker Elmore, there we go, Parker Elmore. And as George illustrated, we changed a little bit in the engineering services, and pushed that into contracted services, to not ham us in as to just engineering services. Training in Ed, we have 3,000 in that line, that's staying in. Postage has gone up, and this is just a reflection of actual postage going up. Advertising, we have listed as going down. We have a lot of advertising go out in 2019, and we weren't planning to have it this year. Printing went down, and advertising went up, so it went under the, the box of advertising, but we pulled it back up, because that was more in line with what it had been the previous year and the year before that. Office supplies, what's the same? And then the next sheet, salary cut down, and then we're gonna push back and go into the Finance Committee, I'm gonna keep on going. So Finance Committee, we've always had a larger budget than, than used to, well, we did last year anyways, I just pushed it back down to a number that's, that I would think would be more representative of what we're doing.
Do we use, what do we use our dues and subscriptions for, are we using that at all?
That's the MMA subscription, so, yeah.
Is anybody reading those?
The big change that, you better read me it.
It's one of the zero.
The big change I made was to the reserve fund, I took 50,000 from the reserve fund and moved it to the snow and ice emergency line, because after the first snowstorm, we were already spending deficit, so this is a little bit more in line with what we're going to be doing going forward, it just seemed like a better place to go, and Janet Captain did agree.
Sorry, can you say that again, so obviously we've had a very warm winter.
Yes, we have.
And not a lot of plows or salts, so after one storm, we were...
By a storm and a half in, we were already in deficit.
So what would have happened if we actually had snow this winter?
It would have come out of the reserve fund.
Yeah.
But that's by design.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's normal.
But the reason why, you know, you run out is because that's all supplies and stuff you get up, upfront.
Okay, but that's not salary of the...
No, well, some of it's salary, but...
It's what is salary for the contracted workers.
That's right.
But everybody gets paid.
Do they get paid whether they, whether it's snow or not?
No, no, they get called in, yeah, Frank will be here, you can ask him that question.
Good.
No, they only get called in, when they, when we need them.
Were there any questions on any of those?
The only question I had, it's a trivial amount, but after George picked up on the other one, I was looking at like postage and printing between Selectmen and HR, does HR use the Selectmen's printer or something, like they have zero?
They have their own printer, as far as, if you're talking, they have a small printer, we use the large printer downstairs, which is like that oversized machine, and they have small desktop stuff, which is a lot of their stuff, they print is confidential, they don't want it on a shared printer.
Well, just looking like the postage basically goes from $500 last year, to combined departments, to 1,300, splitting them both out, it looks like.
And that also has to do with the fact that payroll went into HR, payroll wasn't part of HR previously, it was in the treasurer's department.
So some of that came out of Treasurers?
Yeah, so it's not a one for one.
Gotcha.
It was two switches that went on.
Yep.
Payroll moved from the treasurer's department, and that included everything that payroll was encompassing, and the functions that were going under the Board of Selectmen went to HR also.
Gotcha, all right.
Also, ma'am chair, to Brian, HR uses the Selectmen's office account, so they buy all their printing materials through the Selectmen's account.
Okay.
And we pay for the paper, the town office account, so they don't really have any printing expenses.
I was just surprised, an HR department that doesn't print anything, but...
We pay.
I haven't had one yet.
It's paperless, Brian, we're, we're eco-conscious.
Good.
Just for some, you know, history here, some of the things for employees, like workers comp, are being done out of the Selectmen's office, payroll was being done out of the treasurer's office, other human resource stuff was being done from the person at the time who was doing whatever, so, but the creation of a human resource department, it's all getting done in one place, and now when, when employees have an issue, they know where to go.
That's great.
Yeah, so, it's all been consolidated in there.
Makes sense.
That being said, this is the first year Corinda's had the budget for it, because we just did that last spring.
Very excited to sit down and be part of it. Like, what are they gonna ask me? I'm like, they're gonna rip you over the coals. So any other questions, general questions that I can answer while we're waiting for?
Well, I know you wanna talk about the town accountant, if anybody had any questions, it's the same as last year, so I don't think it's really, it's 135.
Yeah.
That's the same. We talked about the Board of Assessors, we need to talk about...
To talk about legal services, if you'd like, I think we touched on it before.
Sorry, quick question under Town Captain, what is the financial services you're driving to?
We have contracted services with Todd Hassett, Hassett Financial, and he doesn't work at a full-time capacity for the town, he's not a benefit, a benefited town employee, he works, and he works for a day and a half, a week, and takes care of our accounting needs, along with Lori Catalano, who is the assistant in department, and she takes care of the stuff that Todd's not working on, as far as the, the paying of all the bills. I think we touched on briefly about the legal services, how the budget has changed on the legal services. We did have a line in the fire and the police, and they have a labor section, we moved it all into one legal services budget line, so that's what the increase is on that legal services budget line, that's $12,000 over the last year.
And the police and fire line out of the budget has been reduced. Okay, we're gonna talk about information services.
General Other tab, it's just the town reports, and then the cable advisory went up significantly last year, because you're doing contract work this year, so it got pulled down again for the next year's budget, anticipating that that will be wrapped up and not part of the next year. Next stage is contracted services secretary, and as Lorraine posted, that we have now the ability to have some of our meetings capped again by, by qualified people to take the notes again, we didn't have that for the last couple of years, we...
Which section are you in now, you lost?
Oh, I'm sorry, it was one after.
What?
The other general, other general government, last page. Right before the blue...
I'm wondering if I got out of order here, oh, 199? Is that here?
Just for the board.
Yep, okay, sorry, I got behind you.
So the other contracted services on the secretarial, we, the last two, three years, we didn't have a board secretary that would go along and make sure we had the, the notes captured for some of our meetings that don't have clerical support, so we wanted to re-implement that, and somehow we did it, was we have a stipend position now, and we've given that person the opportunity that if it is going to be recorded by LakeCam, they're, they're able to do it from home, and that opened up people to be interested in it. It was hard to fill for two years, it went unfilled, lots of advertisements, no, no takers, so, yeah, no one wants to come out for two hours at night, so we, we have money set aside for that, so we can cover meetings now and make sure all our public records, all the meetings, things are in order.
Should go to 192, Town Office Fire Station.
We have electricity, just, that's just the cost of electricity, it's gone up, we stayed steady with fuel, water service has gone up, it's more reflective of what we actually spent in 2019. We changed the repair and maintenance for building grounds, we had some significant projects going on last year, the budget was 20,000, it's reduced down to 5,000, and the remainder is moving to facilities, then, nothing really, just putting it back down to the levels that we actually spent, as far as the other items, moved it down, rubbish removal went up slightly, but is gonna continue to go up, so, along with electricity. Other contracted services, pretty steady for the last two years, slight increase, telephone, a little bit of a decrease of supplies, we're pretty steady, we did a central copy of supply, we did go... We did go up through, reflects what we had been paying for the last two years on the supplies for copiers. Not only do we supply the copiers for our building, Tracy, we also take care of the parks for the copier service in the parks. Just the maintenance agreement? Just the maintenance agreement for the parks. Custodial supplies, we gave a little increase, a decrease in one and an increase in another. And then, just made it in line with our actuals.
Can we just do telephone for a second?
Okay.
Is that the landline?
This is still the landline.
Okay.
This is still the landline.
So all the phones that work?
Yep.
Not the cell phones?
Not the cell phones. The cell phones come out of a different budget line. Rita's that line?
Yeah.
So, we changed our plans slightly for the cell phones this year, and we went to the high-band emergency line, and we're going to be paying about the same that we paid. I will have to double-check, but Rita, Rita says it is, so. Well, I'm not sure if Police and Fire, they may believe telephones in theirs, but this is for, for all of-
Yeah.
COA.
Police and Fire are their own budgets.
Yeah, but Police also have voice-over IT, which is in the IT budget too, so that's not included in here as far as the operation of the phones.
I was talking about cell phones.
Yeah.
I actually think that's low if it includes cell phones, but-
That's what I was thinking.
Maybe. We're pleasantly surprised.
But our numbers are pretty good. We get a good rate on our cell phones, and we don't have to pay for the actual phones.
Phones.
So that makes a big difference.
Did we do the IT? Did I miss it?
No, we haven't done that.
Okay, all right, then I'll hold my question.
That's 7:45, really early.
Ah, okay.
Okay, any other questions?
Do you guys want to discuss the other items?
We have to wait for the Department heads to come in.
Oh, wait for the other things, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, you mean our agenda items?
Yeah, your items, yeah.
I do just want to go back to just in general contracted services.
Sure.
Is it possible to just put like a little note next to, I, I know it can become complicated, but I just feel like sometimes contracted services are just always lumped up and we don't always know, like George pointed before, and whatever, what is, makes up that $32,000? Is it?
Oh, oh, as far as contracted services?
Yeah.
Well, it's so varied that to put a name on it, you would have to have like 15 different sub-lines on it, but if anyone wants, I can do a printout of the actual bills that came out.
Yeah, it just, because, you know, it comes up, it's always like contracted services, contracted services. It just seems like there's a lot that gets lumped in there, maybe once a year, we could make a list of which.
Absolutely. I get lists like that from the pot all the time, when I see something going heavier than anticipated, so I can make sure that we routed it the correct way, that it came out of the right budget line. But yeah, the reason we have any of those is because they were so varied, like that engineering services on the other line.
Yep.
That was too specific.
Yep.
And, you know, to say we were going to have that line over and over, but we knew we were going to have some type of services like that needed.
Yeah. Or even, you know, like a little thingy on the bottom of the page or an attachment that says this is what, you know, just so that way we have a second set of eyes that's looking at it.
More than a second set, but.
Make sure we're not-
Yeah.
-putting things in twice or whatever.
And overall, it's a negative to last year because of the changes over to Human Resources and for some just moves with, with the way that we're doing some facilities and R and M.
Okay. All right. Well, Rich, we could work on number four, I guess. Want to take some time?
Um.
Because we have to say 15, right?
No, I, yes, I do, but I reviewed it, I'm all set.
Okay. So, while we're waiting, we're going to go along with our agenda, Agenda Item Number Four. At the February 27th meeting, the Board of Selectmen voted to add the question on to the April 6 election warrant regarding Route 79 project. The revised warrant now needs to be voted on, so we have the revised election warrant. And I know you just said you reviewed it, so if that looks good to you, Rich, I'll entertain a motion to approve the revised election warrant for the annual town election on April 6, 2020.
So move.
I will second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Agenda Item Number Five is a request from the Town Clerk who was here not too long ago to send letters to town political committees regarding election workers. So the Town Clerk has requested that the Board vote to send out the letters to the town committees regarding the appointment of election workers. So, I'm just going to read who they are, I guess. So the Democratic election workers are James Guevia Jr., Rita Guevia, Pauline Ashley, Donald Bernier Jr., Karen Regus, James Leonard, Barbara Hadsel, Cynthia Souza, Judy Roberts. And the Republican election workers are Marilyn Hunt, Robert Buckley, Margaret Bethune, Judith Gibbs, Jennifer Baticola, Julie Kettler, Fred C. Beal, Janet L. Tracy, Evelyn C. Bumpus, and Melissa Fitzgerald. So those are the people that will be notified if they want to be appointed this year. So I'll make a motion to send the letters to the town political party committees regarding the appointment of election workers.
So do.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The sixth thing on Agenda Item Number Six was a, is a request from the Planning Board to review a subdivision called Pauline's Path. So we received the plans on, we received the plans, and the Planning Board will be discussing this on March 12th, so they just want to know if we have any comments, questions.
I reviewed the plans, I don't have any questions.
Yep, I don't have any questions either. So it's one, two, three, four, four lots, I think? That's what it was? But we have all that information here. I don't have any questions. I know Rich tries to get the Planning Board meetings, and so do I, but right now, I don't have anything.
Madam Chair, did there was on the plans that they would not sign on the survey? So, do you want to send the, the survey that they not signed?
Okay.
That's a good thing.
Thank you.
All right, so can we, we don't have to vote on that, right? We can just make sure that gets done?
Yep.
Right?
All right.
Okay, so that's our only comment, I guess. Thank you, Tracy. All right, so that was Agenda Item Number Six. We still have a few minutes, 7:08. Any new business? Lorraine?
We sent out some information today on Facebook and to our department heads regarding the coronavirus and the everyday precautions everyone can take to help prevent the spread and to prevent any more panic over the coronavirus. We've been meeting in groups in Town Hall and having discussions with Board of Health and with the Chiefs and Nate Darla also, and trying to come up with some good internal practices to make sure that everyone's prepared for any type of eventuality.
Okay. I'll just add to that, that I did hear a couple of folks saying, well, if they knew who they are, then they should quarantine them. The state has reinforced that HIPAA still absolutely applies, so we can't go marking people with a, on their, on their property, so.
That is not made appropriate to town.
No, it isn't, so, but I do know that came up in a couple of conversations that I've had with people, so the state has sent a formal thing saying that HIPAA absolutely applies. So, any other new business? Rich, Tracy, Lorraine? Nope, guys? Nothing? Okay. 7:09, do we really have to wait? Is this a hearing?
No, we don't have to.
It's not really a hearing, right?
No.
And then?
You don't have to wait.
Is time on the agenda? When people want to be here, we will hold.
We don't have to wait, but okay, we'll wait.
Okay, we'll wait. We still have-
This is a budget, this is a budget thing, it's nothing to do with a hearing or anything.
Yeah. New business? Any old business? Do we have old business? Anything old other than the budget?
I just think you might want to mention the forum next week about Route 79.
Yes.
Naperville.
Yep. How about we let Lorraine do that for us? Give us an update on the, on that presentation.
Next Wednesday, Naperville High School in the auditorium, we're giving a public forum. The Board of Selectmen and the project engineer will do a presentation. We'll be inviting the public to attend. The others that are on the route will be receiving postcards for, as a personal invitation that this is happening. And we're just going to work to get the word out over the weekend and try to get as many folks there as we can, so that they can hear all the information at the same time, ask questions, provide input. There'll be visuals there from the engineer and opportunity for some conversations to take place right before the meeting, should, you know, folks be more comfortable having a conversation versus being in public and updated and easier to maps for everyone that are concerned about their particular property and what this needs to do. We'll also be setting up, I've started today, a link on the Board of Selectmen's website for the project, so as things, our information becomes available, we'll be adding it. It's still, it's still under construction, so information will be put out there as it comes in.
Okay. So that's March 11th, which is-
Next Wednesday.
Wednesday night, next Wednesday night.
Okay, just one other item. I don't think, even though I did send an email today about the regional FinCon meeting, and I don't think that the total boards, both boards, the Finance Committee, the Selectmen, need to attend that meeting. Okay, I know that I will be attending. Could be you, George, or-
Perhaps, yeah.
And Manal Brian said he was probably going to go too, right?
If I'm, my cancel is traveled due to conditions, I'll be there.
Same here, my trip is canceled.
I know that Town Administrator will be going as well. So unless that changes, I'll let you know.
Sure.
That's the way it is.
I probably won't be at that meeting. So, if John's going to attend, we'll have to post for the Selectmen, but if he lets you know that he won't be there, then you won't have to post. If that changes, and ever they want, the whole, let me know, and I'll-
I'll do.
Okay. All right. So that was kind of it for.
Take a recess.
Yeah?
For a minute?
Plenty of time.
I was going to say, how long, I was, how long does it take for Nate to walk to the table?
Three seconds.
You got this.
Can someone remind me where Nate's section is?
We have-
Can't find it on the flag.
Public Safety, after Public Safety, buildings, facilities. 41, under Public Safety Inspection Services.
Okay. After the fire, would you?
Got it.
Hi, Nate. How are you?
I'm doing well, thank you.
Good. Good, good, good.
How you doing, Nate?
We could do this one at a time. How are you doing?
You know what? You should have been here last night. George spilled his drink all over the place.
You would have killed me.
Right, right in front of the-
No, it's very washable.
Oh, yeah?
Right in front of the police chief, too.
They were talking about banning soda. It's Diet Coke, it's like water.
I'm going to ban you. Okay. Where do you want to start with? We got Conservation, Board of Health, Building and Facilities. Why don't we start with the 2.1 Inspection Services?
Inspection Services, as you go through there, everything remains about the same. The only thing additional from what's on your sheet that I'm asking for is a little additional in overtime. We won't see it in front of you, but overtime right now is about $2,000. As we took on zoning board of appeals and planning board, a lot of night meetings, if we do comp time or something like that, we've got less staffing in the office, I'd like to ask for an extra $2,000 in overtime budget.
That's already reflected there, right, Nate?
No, it's not. I currently have $2,000.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
This was the maintenance, maintenance budget.
So, just an asterisk next to that.
Yep. So you were at two, but you'd like to-
Yeah.
-increase it to four.
Correct.
Nate's offices have been very busy with all the new building and everything that's going on, it's requiring a lot more meetings, a lot more time.
I mean, versus putting on additional staff, I thought that this would better suit their department. The only other thing was sealer of leaks and measures. I did put in here a $500 increase. I spoke with Daviness with the new marijuana facilities, there's a huge burden of needing to certify measuring devices. We don't know where that's going to be, it's going to be dependent on how many facilities open up this next year. It's a stipend position. I'd like to ask for $4,500. I don't know if that's too much. We evaluate it next year. I just don't, I don't want to lose this, you know, this position to the amount of work we, multiple gas stations, again, all the marijuana facilities, convenience stores, stuff like that.
Now, what is his actual position? Like, regional or district? Because he does everything-
No, he's down by, he's down by town. He's actually, I believe he's interim police chief in Seaton right now, but he does sear the leaks and measures at Tonkin, Lakeville, maybe even in a middle bar, I'm not sure. But he did say that he would stay on, that he enjoys working here.
And like Nate said, having marijuana is a whole different ballgame, and you don't know how much it's going to impact-
Yep.
-and how time-consuming it's going to be.
Well, I was just going to ask if the additional inspections are for what that, does that fall under mitigating funds that you can put some of that marijuana money towards?
We can take a look?
No, it doesn't. No, that's, you know, that's a service that we have to provide regardless.
Right. I can tell you, Brian, I'm evaluating the fee structure right now to make sure that the fees cover the cost. So, you know, maybe next year this turns into an hourly position, or some other way of doing it, just to make sure it reflects that, a percentage base or something like that.
Right.
Again, I don't know what we're going to be dealing with. You know, we had one just open from a cultivation perspective only, so, you know, if two more open during the course of a year, and you gotta, you know, certify another, you know, 25 or 50 devices, I don't know-
Right.
-where we're going to land. I just don't want to take a chance of losing them.
So I know they work in pounds, whatever, so that falls into that category, but I do know that some of what they do is all like just barcoded stuff. They're going to, there's literally going to be barcodes on each. I mean, is that something that has to be certified?
It's more of any scales, fluids, that type of thing, any quantitative measuring equipment where you have to look at and say-
It all, it all has to be weighed.
And they have to recalibrate.
Yeah, every, every single, every single scale.
Well, I mean, I had just asked, I know one of them, the, when we had gone to one, the question, you know, just for like internal theft or whatever too, and they said that, you know, as part of our, whatever, everything's barcoded, and I didn't know if we have any-
To the best of my knowledge, we don't get into the barcode, and you're absolutely right, that's, that's how it's been presented right along, that each individual plant has a barcode, has identification, they see it from seed all the way to harvesting, so you're right with that, I just don't, I don't think it has anything to do with that.
To do with that, okay. We're going per pound. We're going per pound, basically, and that's what we need to...
What's all I had on inspectional services unless you have any questions on that?
Well, I do. It's nothing to do with the services that you provide. It's the resources that you have available to do your job is that, you know, I know that we're trying to, you know, have one of the maintenance workers do some additional, you know, work, you know, for you because he, we spent probably an hour and a half today looking at, and I can go through the projects that we're currently working on that are already funded, you know, to be done from everything from, you know, the roof at the old town hall to a generator at the COA and there's probably at least 10 or 12, you know, of those items and Nate can't work more than seven days a week now and 24 hours a day and he's working sometimes seven days a week to get some of these things done. So we need to look at how we can provide him some additional resources, some additional hours, not for him, because he's salary anyways.
Yeah, but he's superhuman, he could do it.
So we're going to be looking at that. So, you know, when we probably come back in April, we may have to look at doing something there because not only is it having to do with inspectional services, but it also has to do with, you know, the maintenance of the buildings and, you know, stuff like that and, you know, we can do a lot more of the stuff on our own than instead of, you know, contracting it out, so we'll probably come back with some type of proposal. It won't be huge money, but it'll be something that we need to add some money to that area.
Nothing for in-state travel, I mean, you've got training on here, but is it all coming to you?
Forty-eight hundred dollars a year vehicle allowance, I use my own vehicle, no additional, not for any additional money. I do, but I don't put it forward.
So none of the assistants really have to go to those or?
I have interim, well, I'm interim and alternate after the commission, we have a lot of buildings commissioned, Bob Williams will come over if there's a conflict or something like that. I do have a part-time assistant inspector, I think the number's 3,000 a year. Use him very, very sparingly, uses his own vehicle, gets $40 for inspection, so it's kind of built into our inspection costs.
Okay. What else we review on Nate?
Um, I got conservation, board of health and facilities.
Conservation is?
171?
When was the last one, conservation?
Conservation is 171, board of health and facilities. So conservation, this, no increase at all, it's not by line. We have enough money and as the part-time conservation agent right now, it's $19 a week. Going back, you'll see that, you know, the perfect day share, this is 2019, it's $14,432 on it. That was because we were in between conservation agents, so we used separate resources, conservation commissions did a lot of inspections for us and so on and so forth.
Any questions?
Nope.
Okay, what else we got Nate?
Board of health or facilities, you hit next to that, 510 is board of health, 193 is facilities.
Do 193 first then?
Yep.
So facilities, Rich kind of alluded to it. Ted Delaracco has given a lot more responsibilities as far as gaining access to buildings, scheduling contractors to come in, getting prices for me, all those type of things. I just want to put on the radar, you know, for future conversation that, you know, that is definitely one position that I'd like to, I'd like to see increased. I don't know what that's going to be yet, I know the union's looking at their contract for the year and I think there's something that I'd like to revisit in very near future within the next month or so, maybe at the next meeting.
One of the things that Nate is, is working on, not only is he responsible for the facilities, he's also responsible to make sure these projects get done and get coordinated and he's been struggling to do that just because of time. So this, this is one area where this, this person could help in coordinating some of those things, you know, because whenever there's a problem or whatever, you know, Nate's the one that gets the call. And so he has to put his other hat on to take care of the facilities instead of inspectional services and, and right, right now, and correct me if I'm wrong, he has 90 homes, 90 housing units that he is in the process of inspecting right now. Now, you think it's just going in, you know, inspecting the unit? No, it's everything from the foundation to, you know, the framing to insulation to, you know, so there's, I don't know how many there are altogether, but there's probably seven or eight of them, you know, that need to be done. So think about 90 homes right now that he has to do all those inspections for, which is very, very, very time consuming.
Probably don't all pass on the first visit.
No, that's true too. So there's that area. Then the other thing that, you know, Nate wants to do is that, you know, look at every single building in town. You know, we look at it from a capital standpoint and we say, oh, it needs a new roof, you know, or whatever, the building needs to be painted. But we want to, he wants to evaluate every single building, we're fortunate the police station, of course, is brand new. But, you know, you got the COA, you got the library, you got, you know, the other town hall and of course, you know, that includes the power commission because one of the problems that we've met with them a number of times is that, you know, to get a list of things that need to be fixed, you know, what needs to be fixed? And we just can't seem to get that to be done. And it needs to be done because what happens is that, you know, instead of being proactive in dealing with a problem, we're always reactive. And then you're running around, he's running around trying to get things fixed or whatever, whereas if we had a list of things and we, we could say, oh, well, you know, this is priority number one and two, three, four, five, you know, okay, we'll get to that in September, we'll get that, you know, whatever, or in the wintertime. So we're going to be working towards that because that's more productive for everybody, you know, to, to be able to have lists like that to say, this is what we need to done. And then on top of that, you know, put a cost, you know, associated, you know, with those lineings, I mean, it could be $2,000, $3,000 or whatever, who knows? But we need to do some of that because some of the buildings, not this one and the COA and the library are in very good shape. I mean, but the power commission's got tons of problems that need to be addressed over there, whether it's Claire Pond, you know, Ted Williams, John Pond, and we just got to get a handle on that. Because what happens is, when something happens, guess who they call? They call Nate. And, you know, all of a sudden Nate's got to stop to try to fix a problem. If we were more proactive, I think we'd better do that. So that, that's one of the goals that we want to try to accomplish. And then with this addition of what this person, you know, that he talks about, and he can say, oh, you can take care of this, this, this and this, you know, I mean, it could be a simple thing as, you know, we need a new lock in the, in the town hall, or we need, you know, we need to work on the mulch, you know, for the library, you know, those type of things. So we need to do that, so.
Is there a thought that that evaluation might actually come out and say, wow, we actually need like a superintendent of facilities, it's so long of a list, or?
Well, you never know. I mean, you know...
It's going to be relative to the amount of money that we can put towards this. The starting point would, like to Rich's point, might even be a roof that needs to be done 18 years from now, 10 years from now, but if the roof is $250,000, we ought to identify it sooner than later. And it's not a surprise when it comes up, but you wouldn't want to have him sitting here in front of you tonight and saying, oh, by the way, we need a, you know, $250,000 roof, we need a hundred thousand dollar window job. I think if we can identify and prioritize them in the budget form and according, we can get them done and we can do a long, you know, long range of that needs and if we've got to put additional assets in place to make sure they get done, we can do that, but we know about them. You know, that would also go into making sure everything's properly insured and making sure that it's secure, it's painted, the heating system's functioning, just kind of all around.
I mean, this building is a new building and for a period of time, whatever it is, a year, I'm not quite sure, no. Any work that may come up could be warranty work. But the first day you're out of the warranty, it becomes our responsibility. So in order to keep this building new, you need to address stuff right away. And I know that you just don't have in your schedule, you know, all that time to be, to be running around and...
We are lucky though that I, we're surrounded by a great team. You know, we got a great team of custodians and then Ted, you know, running that group. All of department heads always help out. I know Matt's already looked into, you know, cleaning here and operations as far as heating and cooling equipment and subcontracting a company, company to come in here and do quarterly maintenance on the heating and cooling systems. So, you know, it's nice that I got all of these department heads that are very capable of doing some of that stuff that we know is coming up. And, you know, that's what we, we want to look at, stuff that can be identified, work through the operational budget of that department, subcontracted, and then you have the unanticipated, let's say, you know, facilities and maintenance stuff that comes up and that we can get right on. We have a group of contractors that can come right out with a phone call, we already have all their information, insurances and so on and so forth. So we're fortunate in that, which kind of leads us to the next piece is currently that we're utilizing three part-time custodians of facilities, maintenance workers. These three folks are sharing 40 hours a week. You know, that's another piece where we're getting a lot of painting done. And if you look at prevailing rate and you look at, you know, paying $50, $60 an hour, you know, all of a sudden we got a custodial staff that can take care of painting, small carpentry repairs, do a knob replacement, and you're, you know, $18 to $19 an hour. So you're saving a lot of money by doing that. You're also creating a redundancy within the staff, so, you know, if somebody takes a day off or if somebody's sick or, you know, you're still getting everything done. We're doing a lot more here at the police station as fill-in. They have a subcontractor that comes in and does the majority of the cleaning, but we fill in in some of the sensitive areas with, with our staff, it's a known, right? It's the same people that we deal with every day, they can get into the sensitive areas, everybody trusts them, they have keys, they, you know, they're welcome in those spots. So I'd like to see the, that part-time wages go from the 42, 144, which is around 40 hours a week for the three people, up to maybe 50 hours a week or 60 hours a week. So any, any addition to that ranging from between $10,000 and $18,000 additional. The next thing on that is the vehicle allowance. So Ted Delaracco does an awful lot of driving around and the more facilities he takes care of, the more driving around he does. He runs to Home Depot, he runs to Lowe's, he's running all over town making sure that things are done, right? So I don't know what the number is, but I, I'd kind of like to go from the 20, 2,725 to 3,500.
Does he put in for mileage reimbursement?
No mileage, this is flat rate vehicle allowance similar to what I get. I get substantially more, I get $4,800 a year.
But that auto allowance would be just for one person?
Just for one person.
Just for one person.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the, the part-time folks, Justin actually uses his truck an awful lot, which I think maybe in upcoming years, we might put in for, you know, a small pickup truck for the maintenance staff and Justin will take his pickup truck and load it with debris. Kind of a lot to ask, I think that we probably shouldn't be doing that, but, you know, the part-time is usually go somewhere and do their, do their job for the day.
Dr. Franklin, he knows how to get those trucks.
He does a nice job.
He does.
Knew it when they're done.
Right.
So that was the vehicle allowance. The only other thing I had in facilities was a change from $50,000 for the general facilities account to $70,000. That's not an increase in that item, it's an act line item, it's more of a transfer from other facilities budgets, town hall, fire station facilities budget, we were kind of tracking that separately. Some of that moves over and the COA and historic townhouse brings that to the $70,000. And again, we were just trying to put it in one place, as you can tell, there's these sub-accounts for each one of the facilities so we can track and run reports on what facility is costing more money to maintain than others. They go back and forth, one year somebody might get 10% of the budget, following year they might get 30% of the budget, just depends on where the need is. In the needs, the unanticipated needs. But it puts enough in one place that if it is a larger thing, we can, we can address that without transfers and whatnot.
I know it's very interesting the way, two years, three years ago, the board Nate had it changed, having to have people, you know, vote and sign off and then do the transfers and this has worked out better this year?
Yeah, we established a work request process where department heads could put in a work request and I fill those work requests. Well, when invoices, both labor and materials came in, I'd be, you know, I'd grab my Home Depot bill and run to four different departments to get sign offs with their account numbers and it really made very, very little sense. So that's why we tried to put this facilities piece together and do it like a one-stop-shop. And there's accountability with department head requests as well.
Okay, so I think that's it, right Nate?
Yes, that's it. I just have board of health.
Board of health.
Oh, sorry.
Board of health, everything, everything stayed the same except for I do have one request for the...
Health and services?
Yep, yep.
510.
Everything stayed the same, I did have one request for additional funding on the board of health visiting nurse. As you guys are aware of, we have a lot more issues that are kind of coming to the surface with communicable diseases, tobacco regulations, housing complaints, those sort of things, there's all required reporting on state database for communicable diseases. Right now, I'm already over the $4,000 budgeted from last, last year, so I'd like to see $6,000 in that line.
Anybody have any questions? No, Leah?
Nope.
Thanks Nate, I need to go back to work.
Yeah. Take Friday night off this week. Well, we can do the bucket truck because Franklin's here. Let's get that bucket truck out of the way. So we have a quote for a bucket truck for the highway department of $59,900, which was part of last year's, correct?
Well, this year's capital.
This year's capital, yep, okay. So not for next year, this is for this year?
Yep, I already have a model this year.
Yeah, okay. So if you want to tell us about the bucket truck, I guess?
All right. It's a 2013 Dodge with a Cummins engine. It took us quite a while to find a bucket truck of any kind of quality. This one's actually coming from down south. I was fortunate to be able to talk to a few other people in my position and it kind of led me in that direction. I don't usually make these decisions on my own, so this decision was made between me and my foreman, my master mechanic Billy Freights and Don Adams. We went through a list of a lot of different trucks and this one has given us, you know, most fiscal risk management thing for our pocket, I guess you could say, for what we're getting.
Okay. Any questions? Rich, on that?
No, both of us.
Okay, so...
I'll make a motion, we approve the purchase of the bucket truck.
Okay, so 2013 all tech bucket truck. I'll second that motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We still have a few minutes, right?
What was that with that bucket truck, what's the year on it?
Two thousand thirteen.
And just out of curiosity, what does a brand-new one cost?
About a hundred and fifty.
Okay, so that's, that's how that was?
Yeah, and I believe with the guys I have in place and the quality of this truck, it'll probably give us about the same lifespan as anyone. Same thing I did with my Salters and things like that. It's not a, it's a year-round truck, but it's not a everyday truck.
Got it.
It's used a lot, you know. And then the guys I have doing the maintenance and keeping an eye on it, it'll give us a long life.
Is this replacing existing bucket truck or?
Replacing the nineteen ninety-four. That we got second hand from AstiOT a while back and it definitely needs to get deepened. Soon as we get this one, yeah.
What do we do with the old vehicles?
I drive them.
You drive them?
Yeah. I auctioned through, ours was actually, wasn't a big one.
Okay, yep.
Second use to that.
Yep. So, I understand now that you're asking to purchase a fabric salt shed in the amount of seventy-four thousand three hundred ninety-three dollars ninety-eight cents. Again, this was a-
Capital item for this year.
Capital item for this year, not for next year, for this year. Do you wanna just tell us a little bit about that, whatever you got?
So, at first we were gonna go for two of the aluminum buildings that we had purchased in the past. Working with the base, we had gone up a bit a couple of times, some of them were coming, they were coming through. In doing so, this is actually one that I assisted in building, this is the Edgewood. Middleburg actually building one right now, the same caliber. They have a pretty long lifespan, so the tire on it itself has a fifteen-year warranty. Its lifespan fifteen to twenty years for the tire. The replacement cost on it is around three grand, thirty-five hundred dollars. It's all galvanized, it's all galvanized and stainless steel. And they're gonna do all the prep work, three thousand PSI blocks, it meets all the standards. I worked with Nate on this, so he's looked over it. Hundred thirty-six mile an hour wind, capacity of thirty pounds per, we have a snow capacity. So, it meets all the standards as far as what we need and be concerned of and anything along those lines.
Okay. I know you're always efficient, you always do your homework.
Yep, and actually it's, what we were gonna purchase before were two buildings, which really gave us about six hundred tons of storage. This building is gonna give us anywhere from eight hundred to a thousand tons of storage.
Okay. So, I'll make a motion to approve and award the bid for the salt shed to Iron Horse Structures in the amount of seventy-four thousand three hundred ninety-three dollars ninety-eight cents.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion, any questions, anything Rich?
No, I'm all set.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Just while we're talking about this subject, you know, the, what this will allow for him to do with the Highway Department, the existing salt shed, which is a pretty massive building, I hope you guys probably, maybe you've seen it, Rich. He's gonna use, he's gonna clean that building out, power wash the whole inside of that building. And then he's gonna allow you to put vehicles, store vehicles in there because currently now they're being stored outside, you know. So, if you get them stored inside, then you can improve the life, you know, of those vehicles. So, this is a big step, you know, for him to be able to do that, so. And I, I don't know if we wanna talk about the other office at this point with the finance committees, let them know, stop eating over there.
Well, I do, I do wanna make sure that we should be, that other warrant article, right? Has to come back off.
Well, that's what we're gonna do. Actually, we talked about that today with Todd and Todd accounting and Nate in that the town appropriated a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars for a modular, you know, office space, you know, for the Highway Department. Well, the, the courts that came back didn't make it, it just was too much more money. So, we're kinda reevaluating that whole situation right now and looking at putting up a stick building instead of a modular building 'cause we think it would be better. Excuse me, I should thank Franklin, we think it should be better, you know, for the long term. And that include putting a basement in it, you know, but the other one was not gonna have a basement in it. And so, we're gonna be working on that over the next few months to try to get some preliminary design on that. And then we can get a better estimate. But it's gonna cost more than what is appropriated, you know, the hundred and eighty-four, so it could be a hundred, a hundred fifty thousand dollar more, but we're gonna figure that into the capital plan. This has gotta be done, this is not something that we can just ignore. So, that's the plan right now, so.
If you haven't been by the Highway?
I have.
Take a.
So.
Go visit Jen.
So, to answer your question, yes, we would have to revoke that article because that was strictly for a modular building instead of for a rebuilding, you know, because, so we can't use that money, it's gonna be, you know, moved over.
Reprovisioned.
That's, that's easy to do. Okay? But we'll get to this when we get to the capital plan, you know, the first part of April, so. We'll call you back. We'll call you back in a minute.
Yep.
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
It's backwards. Yep.
It's not a hot seat, come on.
I'm not really asking for anything, so I guess it's not bad.
Yeah, sure.
I didn't use them all last night.
So, I believe, is it in two areas or just that one fifty, one fifty-five? Okay. Okay. I guess we're not ready to talk about the structure yet of, you know, who's gonna do what and whatever. So, that's still up in the air at this point, Maureen?
We've, we've been interviewing, we have a follow-up interview on Wednesday to give us a better idea of some of the ideas that we're gonna have to do going forward. So, sorry we're speaking in code.
So, we're really not ready to talk about it?
No, we'll be transitioning to a different structure.
The, the salary structure here and the job responsibilities are gonna change, so. But we feel, I don't wanna feel confident, maybe everybody else does, but that we probably could stay within that ninety-seven thousand dollar number, just, just, you know, maybe. I'm not saying we can't, I can't. But, so that's-
Are you asking me or are you?
No, I know what you're gonna say. So, you wanna talk a little bit about the expenses?
I mean, nothing's really changing. Maureen's got the printouts of all the contracts that, you know, mainly comprise the maintenance agreements on things like police software, fire software, things they use, you know, every day that you have to pay maintenance on. So, we're not really changing much of anything. The only thing that we've added is we're gonna be moving email from an on-premise email server to Office three sixty-five, which is Microsoft's hosted version of email. So, we've added that in, that's already in the line items, but, you know, the bottom line hasn't changed a massive amount. So, it's just kinda business as usual. We already went through such an upgrade cycle that we don't really have much more to buy, so.
Okay, I guess the, the question is, if you can't answer this now, we can talk about it at another time. But I know we did a lot of work here at the police station, the service are all here and up, up to date now, right? They're all completed?
No, not completed, those are gonna be completed the week of the twenty-third.
Okay, so by the end of March or somewhere in that area, that'll be upgraded, you know, and everything will be here?
Yeah, most everything.
Okay. What else is there, needs to be done?
So, the things that are on my, my bucket list, if you will, is moving the email, you know, from that on-premise solution to Microsoft, upgrading the servers. I've done all of the public safety laptops, the cruiser laptops, except for one, I gotta get that done. There's a couple of items at the COA that I wanna get done. The COA, the network didn't used to be part of this network, meaning Kelly and the others on the COA just logged into a, it's called a work group. So, it was basically like three or four computers on a, on a work group. So, they couldn't connect the email and stuff like that here. So, I figured out what was wrong with that, changed Kelly, and I gotta just change the others. So, that's on my bucket list. But I mean, the, the main things right there, I'm moving the email, so I wanna move that before I'm gonna agree with the servers.
Before you upgrade this?
Yeah, and then migration to the servers.
Okay.
I don't know anything about our network infrastructure now, but does that mean the COA, they were on a work group and now they're coming onto a domain or they?
Yeah, so, so at the COA, and I don't really have a reason why it was done this way, I logically can't figure it out. But the COA, they created a public side to the network. And the, when the seniors came in to use computers, they were actually sitting on the same network as Kelly and the other workers. So, you know, one of those people got a virus, it could spread to the other machine. So, when I first noticed that, I broke those off. And they have a free Comcast drop there, so I just put the, the machines for the public on that free Comcast drop, separated them. But the machines at the COA still didn't have an ability to connect to any of the assets at Town Hall. So, I've changed out the Kelly and upgraded our machine. So, I just gotta do the same with the other ones. I know what to do, I just haven't gotten around to it yet.
Great. Can you talk about cybersecurity? Corporate America is a big topic right now, you imagine, how do we deal with it at the town?
Yeah, so what I've been doing, and this is one of the things actually I have to change too. When I first came in, I started taking your antivirus software, which is like an on-premise, you know, Symantec antivirus. And I have an interface that I use that's provided by a company called SolarWinds. And I just moved you guys onto my SolarWinds platform. So, what that allows you to do is you install an agent on every machine in the building. And the agent runs and checks all kinds of things like failed login attempts, you know, if a machine's got a virus, if there's some security patch that's out of date or has, you know, failed its installation. So, from a security standpoint, all that stuff just monitors back to me, checks run on those systems every, depending on the system, everywhere from every fifteen minutes to every hour. And I get emails if something's wrong, so.
How often is someone trying to hack into our system or?
Well, I mean, it's just kinda, that's a, it's kind of a loaded question in a sense because every system anywhere at all.
Like they're being pinged all the time?
Yeah, nonstop. So, if you look at any, if you look at your home stuff, it's nonstop, you know what I mean? There's basically just bots out there that are looking at networks, pinging and pinging, looking for, unpack this, unpack that, you know, some known way in.
Is there training for the town staff? I assume there is like cybersecurity training? Like, don't, don't click on links to?
Yeah, there's been in the past, to my understanding, which predates me. I know the state has offered grants at different times where they offer that type of training. And I believe John Barker, which also predates me, he did some stuff. He, some of the guys in the police department were somewhat irritated with him trying to trick them. It was funny though, yeah. So, so, yeah, that's, that's happened probably, I'm gonna guess, two, three years ago.
I've had to, the president of our company get caught, like, give an email, right away, we need your, you know, we need you to log into this account, your credit card or whatever.
Yeah, it's so easy to do.
Yeah, exactly. And if you're not paying attention, then you just click, click the link and that's all it takes.
Yeah, but like from an antivirus standpoint, if a machine gets infected, I know about it pretty quickly. Like, a good example would be a couple of days ago, I was here, Board of Health, got an email, you know, clicked on the link, like what they're talking about, and instantly I got an alert on my phone, that machine's got a virus, and I looked at it, you know, but the antivirus had thankfully blocked it, just kinda ran through it to make sure, really blocked it, and that was it. So, that's kinda like layer one. So, you've got this cloud-based security software, so it's not sitting on your network, it's sitting in the cloud, that agents run and the agents checking with you all the time. And then just from a backup standpoint, the backups back up locally. And then they back up to, we have a fiber connection between us and TMLP, and they back up to TMLP. So, you know, you would hope that if you had an event, you know, even if the building burned down, you've got those backups, you know, at TMLP, not that it wouldn't take a little bit to restore from them, but at least they're there.
When's the last time we've done a continuity exercise?
I can't answer that.
Probably never then.
Yeah.
Is the, I just flipped back, I know we're not talking capital plan, but I know it's fifty thousand dollars there. But I was just surprised that the replacement costs are relatively small. Is the town, you know, we have new stuff here at the police station, but is the town pretty good about replacing hardware in a good timeframe as far as computers go? Or do we have a bunch of beige boxes out there you're just dying to kick off?
It, it depends. I replaced some machines that, you know, were within that threshold. Like, I do a three to five-year replacement cycle on workstations as reasonable.
Sure.
And even the five, the five-year under, it's not bad. But, you know, I replaced some machines that were certainly older than that. I replaced some machines that were probably four years old.
Okay.
So, you know, it's kinda, I think they would get replaced on a as-needed basis, you know. But, yeah, it wasn't terrible. The server infrastructure is an expensive server infrastructure, but, you know, it's at the end of its life now, so, you know, we're gonna be finally migrating those over.
All right, so there's not a bunch of hidden old machines we're gonna?
No, no, I mean, if we look at the PD, every machine in the building's burned and all the cruiser laptops are burned.
Nice.
Same thing with the fire department. I've replaced pretty much every workstation in the whole machinery except for the hand foot. So, and just, 'cause I just haven't got around to it. But, you know, we have, we have them and it's coming.
Good to hear.
So.
Nice.
Yeah, so we're getting, and this server setup that we're migrating to now, you know, on the very low side, should last to five years, you know, realistically more like seven, if I had to, you know, pin a number to it.
Yep.
But at that point, you know, you'll have to revisit things because the migration path might be such that a lot of the server workload will be moved to the cloud. So, you know, you'll be paying subscription fees on one hand to, you know, to those cloud providers, but you might not need as, as robust a hardware for that refresh cycle.
So, you mentioned emails going to three sixty-five, and in full disclosure, I work for Office three sixty-five. So, but I'm just also curious. No. I can't even get a deal.
It's expensive.
Is it just mail or did the town also look at other things?
No, so we, we kinda got a sweetheart deal on the Office twenty nineteen licenses. So, I think off the top of my head, we got all the Office, Office twenty nineteen licenses for like eight grand. So, we purchased, you know, a volume license key of all those for short money.
Yep.
So, when we go to Office three sixty-five, it's just mail to start, but there's definitely a use case to be said for certain people that you might wanna get, like a G three, G five subscription for. But I didn't really see the value in spending as much as it would cost. I mean, for this town, if you move everybody to full Office three sixty-five, you'd be charging thirty-five, forty thousand dollars.
Depends on the needs and you've refreshed a bunch of service stuff recently.
Yeah, so, so, so I had to refresh the servers because the police systems like have to, you know, have that infrastructure. And we still have some legacy systems that we have to keep running. So, those will all get, you know, migrated from the server infrastructure. So, then you've got it there, may as well split the file share on it. The system we're going to is called Mechanics, I don't know if it's another one. And so, Mechanics has a built-in terabyte file storage anyway. So, you know, it was, if you went to Office three sixty-five and paid that subscription fee, the mobility that Office three sixty-five affords those people is, is of a benefit. But for, you know, for everybody else that really doesn't have to access their files externally, which would just be a call center.
Yep. Thanks for the detail.
Yeah.
So, I'm, sorry, I'm just looking at last year's highlighted in red. It said on the email, budgeting six dollars per month per box, quoted at five thirty per user, currently two hundred fifteen email boxes. How many are we at?
Yeah, you know what? I don't have a good answer to that and that's one of the things.
More than two fifteen, we probably added.
There's a ton of email boxes in there, I've been going through them, like, at one point we doubled out email to everybody. So, gotta kinda rein that in. I had Kim Bento went through them and said, okay, this person's on here and this person's on there. Well, but this, there were some like people who are on committees or on, you know, one-off groups that I don't know who they are. So, you know, we tried to figure that piece out. I'm gonna venture to guess it's probably gonna be more like one fifty. And that number's gonna go up slightly because the five or six blocks or whatever. You also wanna include archiving to that, and that still costs a little bit, but we budgeted for that when we added that in.
Okay.
So. Uh, actually, since you're Office three sixty-five.
You should have stayed quiet.
Oh geez.
Um, so, I'll ask you your opinion, the archiving piece, right?
For mail specifically?
Yeah, for mail specifically. Do you, you can archive on-prem or you can, you know, pay for the archive and service?
Hmm?
I mean, I guess you're the, what's your, are you a sales guy?
No.
Ah, all right, all right. So what, what are your thoughts on that? I mean, I, to me, I'd like to just get it off my plate.
Uh, depends on the needs. It's one of those things where you can't say yes or no.
Yeah.
I wanna have a deeper discussion and find out where the pain points are. Is there a cost benefit to it for you guys?
I'm just thinking the discovery down the road just makes it so much easier for you to ask.
If it's a, if all the content you need to perform discoveries are in one ecosystem, it's always easier. If you perform discoveries against a baker's dozen worth of other systems, may or may not be beneficial.
Yep.
It could be a long conversation.
Yep.
Going back to each individual email though, I mean, I think we need, I don't know if it's up to the board of selectmen, I don't know if we put it like a guideline. I mean, as a selectman, as a member of the board of selectmen, I use my town email address all the time.
Yep.
But like you said, there's other people on committees and stuff that, you know, may not even check that email. So I, I just don't know. If you have thoughts on, you know?
Talking about naming conventions.
Yeah.
Um, and trying to add some continuity to it, like if someone's a member of a board, they're member one, Board of Health, or, you know, some subset of that. So we don't have to keep changing it to different people's names and removing people from groups and adding people to groups. We would just archive what the individual information was prior to it and then keep on with that email address. And that would provide some continuity to the people at the town. Like instead of the email address for me being m candito@lakevilleMA.org, it would be townadministrator@lakevilleMA.org and making it about the position as opposed to the person. Um, but that would increase because that would give everyone on boards, which to your point, not everyone is uh, using currently. Uh, but we ran into a couple of situations where we had some public records requests. Um, and we definitely want to be using um.
A town email address.
Meeting law um, issue. Um, we, we have to collect data from everyone and ask for, you know, any data people had relating to subjects on their personal email if they use personal email. And I think that's as a town, a very responsible way to, you know, to keep our data, so.
That's, you know, kind of my whole, my whole thing is, you know, do we pay for all those email to let everybody on every commission and committee and board or?
Yeah, I, I think you do, and I think you, you do just, obviously the time they're passing through from a ease of management, we'll say, um, you know, to Maureen's point, just make it, you know, positional email blocks that that person has for their tenure here, and it just kind of rolls to the next person.
Yeah, I mean, I also see that as griefs in, in a lot of cases for the I T person because I do know the frequency that passwords have to be changed at Town Hall, and I know myself when, you know, when I was only using it sporadically, I would always get locked out of it, whatever, and I'd be, you know, hey, can you reset my password and blah, blah, blah. I can't imagine doing that for thirty extra people.
Yeah, with, with those people, that, that won't be an issue.
Yeah. So I'm not saying the information is less important, but, you know, for people that are only using it every now and then to have to go in and change the password, it just puts more on, on the I T person, I think, when they're getting locked out.
Once we go to Office three sixty-five, that'll, that'll.
Get better.
That'll cease because right now, when you think about it, um, everybody's logging into a, I say everybody, most people are logging into a PC at park and this password policy's on those PCs at work. So what happened in the past was a password policy was domain-wide, so it said, you know, I don't even know what it was off the top of my head, but every ninety days, the password has to be reset. So when that would happen, those external users that never sit at a PC don't have the opportunity to reset their passwords, they just get locked out of their account.
Right.
So that led to everybody just not using email addresses at all.
Right.
Um, but so, so I just made all those people's passwords not expire, not ideal, but, you know, you gotta do it, you gotta do the.
Yes.
Yeah.
So I, I just think we need to put some thought into the whole, you know?
Great, now's the time as we're transitioning.
Yeah.
To a different level.
So, okay.
Thank you. Richard asked earlier, um, I did, and Tim had made note, um, if you were asking what was in that tech services line, that first line for a hundred fifty thousand, um, that was Alatic, which is the fire software, Viewpoint, which is the funding software, Hammett, which is the police department software, Tyler, which is our munis software, and um, some legacy um, payments to Pyramid Technology, which is current. So that was the bulk of.
Okay.
Of what goes into there. So, and that's, and that, that's changed um, a little bit year over year as we've moved to those type of services and we've taken from the police.
Munis is primarily the lion's share of that.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Thank you, Tim.
Thanks guys.
Frank, you're up.
Frank, you're up. You're back.
Hey, Public Works four twenty. I guess the, oh, go ahead, you, I guess you can talk about it, Frank. The change in uh, the hours for formally charged to the park.
Yep, there's uh, two changes, pretty significant changes, I guess you could say, the personnel, um, which isn't exactly finalized, but uh, we'd be absorbing the additional thirty-two weeks from um, which before was being paid for through the parks. And they did not budget this year for the thirty-two weeks, so I'm looking to absorb the thirty-two weeks, which gives me a full-time, year-long employee, which I've kind of been hoping to get for a while now. Um, we're definitely in need of staffing. So that's where that ten point six four percent increase is coming from. Um, the other increase that we see is the fifteen point nine nine percent increase on my part-time labors. So that's part to do with um, putting on additional help in the winter time, which actually worked out perfect this winter, considering the late winter that we had, we were able to do um, a lot of work out there. And also a new position that I went from the board with for um, Mr. Jordi Freitz has basically like a trade man. He does um, he saves me a lot of money in the fact that um, he does auto-body work, um, paints things, this, uh, things of that nature, painting trucks. Right now he's painting actually a John Deere um, piece of equipment that I picked up out of auction, which was actually on my Capitol items for next year, but now it'll come off. Um, so that's where that addition came in.
I just wanted to chime in real quick on Franklin's addition on um, on that position. This is the uh, position where um, he's getting help for Jordi Freitz, the, that's the fifteen percent increase.
Oh, no, nope. So that's not even, so that's where, we're trying to see what happens with the union negotiations, I guess, ultimately. Um, where, since I started here, actually, um, I moved Don Adams, who's a excellent fabricator, well, the um, small equipment mechanic. I moved him off from our road crews and put him into the mechanics as an assistant mechanic to Billy Freitz. Um, we have a pretty, we've really um, taken on the walk as far as the mechanic shop goes. Um, we've uh, taken on a lot more with the fire department. Um, we do all the police and, and obviously all our equipment, our equipment keeps getting more and more as time goes on. Um, and um, neither one of you has speak to it, but the chief of police or chief of file, let's speak to the fact that, the fact that I have Don Adams in there with Billy means that a piece of one of our public safety equipment goes down, it's backed out much quicker and it's saving them a lot more money because they're not contracting out, having to go to dealers and dealing with things like that. Typically, my guys can deal with most of it at this point.
That's a big savings.
Yeah.
And that's not in here yet, only because we're kind of trying to work out and see what happens with union negotiations and then kind of see whether I should change over those job description as an assistant mechanic or just kind of, if we stick in differential, maybe he gets a differential as an assistant mechanic and just keeps his own um, position.
Yeah, um, talking to Chief O'Brien, he said um, that Franklin's mechanics have saved him between six and ten thousand dollars this year.
The other factor that's in there, which says, you know, we had a discussion with the park commission and uh, you know, Franklin, myself and Maureen have met with them a few times and uh, our proposal was to have Franklin take complete responsibility of all of the uh, main, outside maintenance of the Ted Williams camp. He already, believe it or not, he already does John Pohn, so that's not an issue. And um, so we've been, you know, waiting, you know, for a couple of months for them to give us an answer as to what we're gonna do. And the reason why is because the, the position that he just talked about, Mike Vickery, he's retiring at the end of March. So that position was shared between the, the park and the, and the highway, you know, department. And that's a very valuable resource that we're losing. And so the park commission thinks it just go out and hire a, you know, a laborer to go cut grass and so forth, but it doesn't work that way because you gotta take care of the equipment, you gotta maintain all the equipment and so forth and so on. So um, I think, and I think, you know, Franklin doesn't need more responsibility, but he knows this is the right thing to do because he has the people and the experience to do it. I mean, that's where he came from. I mean, he, he was the, what do they call it, the park superintendent in the city of New Bedford, so he's quite familiar what needs to be done, you know? And there's been a lot of um, problems, you know, in the park, you know, commission area because of, you know, hiring part-time people and doing this and doing that, and it's just, needs to be better managed. And currently, the way they manage it is that they manage it themselves with five commissioners instead of having, you know, somebody like Franklin say, hey, this is what you gotta do today, you know? And so we're waiting for them to make a decision. They're supposed to be discussing it tonight as to what, what they want to do, but um, if they don't do something like this, they're gonna have a serious problem. Big problem, you know, because grass goes out to grow here in a couple of weeks, they don't have anybody, you know, to do it. So, and I don't want to put that response, I don't, we don't want to put that responsibility on him and just dump it on him now, say, oh, go cuss, I got the grass. He's got so much to do in the spring, you know, as it is in other areas, you know, uh, as well, so I don't know, I don't understand, you know, their resistance, you know, to do it.
So you're suggesting they hire an additional person?
Well, they have money in their budget, okay? To, to hire a person, okay? It may have to be supplemented a little bit. They have, I don't know how many part-time people they hire.
I don't either.
I had two listed, not under that line, that they used two people for labors plus.
Seasonal, I mean, seasonal, seasonal people too, I believe, right?
Yeah, they have seasonal.
Yeah, and I don't know, because they're.
I don't know either. I don't.
Anyways, so we're trying to get this resolved, but if they, you know, so this may change.
Ideally, we form a parks department where we have a full-time um, foreman, let's say, and a full-time laborer under him, um, because it's not just Ted Williams and John Pohn.
Oh, it's Clay Pond too.
Clay Pond also, and now you're talking across the football fields down below here. Um, and now that's just talking about the field, then I'll talk about forestry work and um, grading and repairing the pocket lots and um, you know, a lot of other things that have kind of gone behind. And I, I have a lot of respect for Mike Vickery and I think he did the best he could do. Um, but when you're understaffed and under manned and you have um, you know, Ted Williams is a huge undertaking to take care of, a lot of things fell behind.
Okay, let's go on to the expense area, I guess.
Just a rundown of the list?
Uh, yeah, sure.
Electricity, um, I put it up to seventy-five hundred, I adjusted that to match last year's number, on the actual number that, that we came, um, that we ended the year with. Um, heating fuel, I kept it the same, six hundred, it's really there as an emergency situation. We actually just got a, a new waste oil burner. Um, and we get a lot of our, we get a lot of waste oil donated to us, and then also we obviously produce a lot of our own waste oil, which is, we, a hundred percent of our heat is basically coming from that waste oil burner. Um, water service went up a little bit, just to match in last year's numbers. Um, repair maintenance on uh, building using grounds. Nate's okay with me keeping this, if he needed it to get transferred over to his, I, I would have no problem with that either because it really shouldn't be, and they have. But typically, um, I always involve Nate in repair maintenance on my buildings, um, but typically I take control of it myself, I deal with the contractors, I hire them, I oversee it. Um, I try to, you know, keep, keep Nate out because we, you guys were just talking about how busy the guy is. Um, so that's the same. Repair maintenance on vehicles, um, that I bumped up last year was actually relatively low, but as you see the year before, we were at twenty grand. Um, what that'll do also is alleviate some of the bigger jobs, anything that's gonna um, really tie up our lift for a long period of time, where I can run into other issues where, just like we were just talking about, police, fire, um, all the other things that may come in. We really don't want to keep it tied up for a long period of time, just gives me more flexibility with that. Repair maintenance on equipment, as you see, it's a really slow number. Um, that can go either way. I put it up a little bit, that's, that's something that we hadn't even used in the past, but it's just there in case we needed it. Like I said, I moved Don Adams into that, that um, position to cover that. Contracted services, that's where things kind of changed a lot after meeting with Maureen and um, Todd. We talked about separating my contracted services out. So what happened was, we took that eighty thousand dollar number, um, kept ten thousand dollars there, it was that, that number's there at all. Uh, you know, if I need a tree done that my guys kind of can't handle, which will actually be being done tomorrow, there's a tree, um, it's a little unsafe for my guys to do, so we have a company coming in to do it. Um, gives me flexibility with things of that nature. And then I'll just skip down to those other ones, just while we're on a cracked ceiling, that was part of that eighty grand from the original budget for this year, the twenty-twenty hit. Uh, the other twenty grand was pot, uh, fifty grand was for the cracks in the twenty grand was for the lime painting. And then this year, the new addition to the contracted services is catch basin cleaning. So our catch basin truck went down last year. Um, to purchase a new catch basin truck is pretty expensive even used, um, and the one that we have right now, just to get it back going, I would say would put us up as a thirty, forty thousand dollars, and it's a, I believe it's, I don't, I should have the exact year ready, it's like a nineteen ninety or something like that, so you'd just be throwing money away at that point. Um, but this seventeen thousand dollar number is a high number now, but considering we stopped using sand in our salt process, um, every year this number will go down. Um, right now you still get the washout, you see that a lot on the roads still from just the years of sand, using sand on the roads. Um, but this number will, will go down as years go on, because you only actually have to clean the catch basins, basins caught following the MS four, you're in there between twenty-five and fifty percent full. Um, so that's, just kind of gives a little bit of explanation of how those contracted services were broken up and um, where the extra money came from there. Um, over the training and education, twenty-five hundred this year, I upped it last year, I'm upping it again this year, it's for um, just things for both myself and my guys, um, train, training as far as uh, I sent them to s- salt and sand training to kind of get a better idea of why I changed, the processes I changed, um, sending Bill, my, my mechanic Billy to his classes that needs to go to, um, for myself to keep continuing on further, my educational different process and things that come up, um, things of that nature. up, things of that nature. Telephone, I just matched what I had last year. Ossage, same. Laundry service, same. Office supplies, same. We did up the groundskeeping supplies, the reason being is because the guys are kind of taking a little more ownership in the, in our yard. Anybody who's wanting to come by and check it out. We've been putting a lot of work into it now that, you know, I even have like, one of my mechanics, I won't say his name or anything, he's going out buying flowers and like putting it out there. He's just, they're taking ownership of the property, which is a big deal to me. It's good for the culture of the department.
They've done a nice job. Drive by it every day, looks much more representative.
And they really are taking ownership of it themselves, that allowed me having to really tell them all that much, you know? Custodial supplies, same reason I put that up, is for the groundskeeper supplies, just kind of gives them a little more, give them room on improvements, cleaning supplies, things that screws the place up. Vehicle gasoline, just matching up with last year's numbers. Public works material, I actually put up the 35 grand. My original budget was right around this $24,000 number, and I was over by almost six, seven grand, eight grand last year. We had to stop actually using public works materials right around May. From that time, we did quite a bit of work, but that's, so that's repairing catch basins, that's fixing swales, we did a bunch of Harrod's Hill, we did a bunch on Highland, just that type of stuff, it adds up. It's almost like a thousand dollars a piece, I don't know how far you got to go down to reset them. It also pays for a lot of our stone and our Hocknix asphalt for our patches, all that type of stuff that we're doing out there. We blew right through it last year, so that number went up. Supplies and machinery, that's, covers all the parts and garage supplies. It also gives me the flexibility, like I was just talking about the John Deere tractor that I have on my capital for next year, I could add it for like 50 grand for next year. We actually found a really nice one through the auction, because of the capability of Billy and Don, they found something that was 2003, in really good shape. It's enclosed cab, heat, air-conditioned, the whole nine. We got the thing, the state was fortunate, I was fortunate enough, the state gave it to me, I think I paid 35,000 for it. It's easily a $30,000 machine and the state going to figure out what was wrong with it. Not, not going to stay, I guess, my guys figured it out within a week and it's, it's, that's what Georgie's painting right now, so it's definitely saved us a lot of money. I also bought three pickups out of that this year for my summer, three ranges from auction again. Mass D O T's really good to me when I go to the auction, I must say, if I go there ahead of time and I tell them what I want, they usually give it to me at a very inexpensive price. And I always bring Billy with me to, to kind of take a look at all that, to make sure we're making, you know, responsible decisions. Regional services, our sausage, so that's that consortium of contracted services. That's what I use for, for example, I use it to do like recent street, I use sausage for the overlay on that. Lime painting, I use sausage. There's a lot of different things. I think there's other town, other departments in the town they use it for other things. Interstate travel, kept the same. Dues and subscriptions, kept the same. And then that gets into snow and ice, which is, that went up, but I guess the principle of that going up is so after the first storm, we're not already in the reserve fund. Street lighting, kept the same. That's an issue that I begin to track, but that's in front of conversation, that number stayed the same. And cemetery is a new item here. I don't really know what the pass is, but all of it staying the same with that.
And he doesn't even charge back the departments for all the work that he does. All the, all the mechanical work, mechanics and everything, you know, that's everything from, you know, changing the oil on all the cruisers and all the vehicles, you know, a ton, doesn't charge back. So he's saving us tons and tons of money.
So if I can ask a question. Short of capital requests, how many miles of road could you guys actually repave in a year?
Uh, basically a mile. So that's the point of perspective, so just say 70 miles, mile a year.
So if you paved my road, I'd be dead before the next time.
It's a happy summer.
I just think that's kind of important to me, because otherwise you've got, there's like 24,000 in public works funds there, and it's really...
Yeah, that, that's, the public work funds is really not used for paving. It's more useful for fixes and catch bases and patches and things like that. The paving typically comes out of chapter nine money.
Okay. Any other questions? Do we want to talk about the transfer station then?
Sure.
Who's that under? It's under enterprise.
It's 430.
Thanks.
So equipment operator, so basically actually these numbers depend obviously on the contract. The increase in the park is just a step increase for me. The labors are going down because we actually shut down today. And that number may go down again, I have word that he, there's a few guys who hit me close to 80, I believe it is. So at this point, it's almost not worth it to even work hard time because of taxes, I don't really know what that's, that's another thing, but so that number is a relatively safe number. Over time, staying the same. The rest of that stuff on this line, down to contracted clothing, I don't have any control over that, numbers given to me through the town. Contracted clothing, that's union. The other non-contract, non-contract clothing allowance is just to buy the part-time guys' t-shirts and stuff like that, so they look professional and they're working. Any questions about, I mean, right into expenses.
Yeah, was there any, any big ones? I don't have to make you go through all of that. Unless you guys, it's...
I guess repair maintenance on vehicles, that one went up a grand from last year. Reason being that's up is up as 11 years old, we already put this year into it 6 grand, I believe. And there's still repairs that need to be made. As, you know, as trucks age, they obviously need more. The other number that went up is our bulky waste number, and that's only because the price of getting rid of it has gone up, about 135 a ton.
Can I comment on that one?
Sure.
We did back, was it September, October, maybe October?
Yep.
We did raise the fees on some of that stuff, but, and it still seems very reasonable, but, you know, if you raise it too much, you run the risk of people just dumping it on the street somewhere. So it's kind of like a fine line. So we, we're trying to give, you know, Frank, more money to work with, but it's, you know, you don't want people just, and they still do it anyways, and it's only, what, like $20 to get rid of the refrigerator or, you know, whatever it is. But we were afraid of raising it too much because then people wouldn't even try, they'd just dump it somewhere. So it's a fine line, because, you know, a few people have said to me, oh, just raise the rates. Well, you really can't just raise them.
Yeah, the rates that we did raise the two were relative to everyone around us.
Yeah.
So I agree with the fact that they weren't overly raised. And that's why this is going to be almost like a tough year to gauge as far as we start talking about revenues, it's going to, right now, we're up on stickers, we were last year, but the sticker price is also going up. But we don't really have much choice in the matter because we're no longer really getting any money at all as far as, we get money for metal, sometimes we get money for newspaper, just about everything else we were getting money for now, we either pay to get rid of or some of it just is a break even. But it's just going the wrong direction kind of with all that stuff.
Frank, if I can jump in also, so we have to supplement sometimes to make this budget happen. And right now, we're planning on supplementing at about 30%. About two years, we'll be supplementing at about 50%. So that's the way that trash is going. I've had about four trash conferences since I've been here. Everyone's kind of in the same boat, we're on the same panic, there is no more recyclables market, which, and most people's land caps are, land, landfills are capped at this point. So we are running into situations where trash is going to become a bigger and bigger problem for the, every town around here, and solutions have not been forthcoming.
Is there a point financially where...
50%.
So I can ask anything right now?
He answers 50%.
50%.
That's how much of a raise Frank's getting?
Yes.
Maybe is there a point where depending on how much we have to subsidize it, that we start looking at townwide trash service or something, 50%?
So it would be de-enterprising it at that point, at 50%. 30% is, is pretty on the line too, but at 50%, you're really, you're supplementing, it's no longer an enterprise fund is what the true meaning of an enterprise fund would be. So other towns have waited till they've got to closer to 50% to make that decision. But if you read other people's stories in other towns, it is something everyone's struggling with right now.
Yeah, I will say my lead operator, Dave Thomas, at the transfer station, and Jen both do a good job in the beginning of the week, especially, they'll talk to each other about certain heavy loads he has going out, and they'll call around to places, we have contracts with certain places, but places, we don't have contracts for, for the cardboard or certain things, they'll call around and try to, there's different markets from different places, like Bill or Old City, depending on where you're trying to go there sometimes. So they really are trying to save money.
They're almost in a commodities game now, just finding the best buyer.
Yeah.
If you can find the buyer.
Yeah.
It's that bad, yeah.
But, I mean, it became an enterprise fund, I don't even remember when that was, but, because it was at the time.
Sure, we used to get great money for recycling.
Yeah, just about when I started this year, I started it.
Good job, Frank.
So, I, I mean, I do think we're going to have to look at that as a question of, you know...
Yeah, when, when it hits that point, do we want to wait for it to go to that point or do we want to be proactive and...
I mean, you know, you raise the, some of the special items, the bulky items, you raise the sticker fee, people like, oh, I could just, you know, get a little dumpster at my own house and charge a neighbor half, and we both use it, I mean, you know, whatever. So...
What percentage of the town has dumped stickers, do you know?
Uh, well, it's, I don't know, but I know this year we sold 18 million stickers to the town.
Are there around 4,000 homes somewhere?
Yeah. It's really too bad because we have a beautiful transfer station.
We do.
Very well-run transfer station, very clean, and it's really too bad, you know? But hey, things may turn around, you never know.
Yeah, tech is Chinese, stop taking.
Yeah, yep, they stopped taking all the class and that, we were getting paid for that, now we got to pay to get rid of it. That all happened last year. Same with cardboard, they call that the Amazon effect, because now everything comes in a box, in a box, in a box. So value obviously, really.
But one of the biggest problems in Massachusetts is that the landfills, I think there may be one, maybe two middle boroughs still, but they're going to have to close theirs. But that's the biggest problem, what are we going to do with our trash, you know? And we belong to the ABC and the wastewater, the CMA's one or whatever, and the state of Massachusetts won't allow any more of those facilities, doesn't make any sense.
Like we have trash pickup, what are they doing with it?
The ABC?
Yeah, well, ABC or any of them.
Any company.
They take it to their facility, the other companies, I don't know what they're doing with it.
On this, I don't know what they're doing, I know they outsort me to try to take out a lot of the plastics and things like that, which is the same reason we're doing it at the transfer station, even though we're not getting paid for it anymore, it's so much cheaper to get rid of on its own, so it's much better to separate it from the trash. But I don't know what, just the Massachusetts would have to, at all. Good question.
Yeah, but like I said, at every, at every meeting, we sit in, there's not great answers. Other countries doing, there's a lot of cleaner burning incinerators that are being thrown in the country, but it's not something, yeah.
Not here, not a lot.
We have the revenues, I'd say we talk with the revenues and just use the historical data and then while we're on trend, follow the shit.
We raised the bags too, right? Didn't we raise the bags?
Uh, yes.
So we raised the sticker fee, I mean, I think we can...
All very minimal, but it still matched up with surrounding towns, actually, we're actually cheaper than even still, even by raising it for certain items.
And even though you raise it, you lose some people who raised it, so there's elasticity to that.
This year's going to bring, we could get the same amount of people, which would give us higher revenue as you know.
Or someone might say, forget it.
A lot of people will say, forget it, and what are you doing?
I will say the one that surprised me the most was when we were talking about brush. I thought it was, I was surprised at what we charged for the brush, I can't, do you remember?
It was like $5.
Yeah, for like a pickup truck. I mean, that's, you know, to me, kind of inexpensive, but we didn't, I don't think we raised that one. So there may be like a couple more things that we could at the worst case in the area go into raise, but overall, we've done as much raising as I think we should right now.
Yeah.
Start finding trash in the middle of Bedford Street or something.
See when the show runs and then go back to the drawing board and try to...
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
So, that was it for the budgets. We had a little bit of old business with a reminder on March 11th at the high school, 6:00 PM or 6:00?
7:00.
7:00, thank you.
7:00.
7:00. Any other old business or any other business?
Yeah, I just wanted to say the finance committee. So where we are right now is, as I said, the next would be the school meeting, then we figure out what that's going to be. But I would not anticipate anything else during the month of March, you know, at this point. And then the other, the next step would be to try to get our handle around the capital, you know, items to discuss that. And once again, that won't be for the first, second week in April probably. But the plan here is, is that, is to have this budget finalized two weeks before the annual town meeting, so everybody will have it, you know, get copies of it or whoever needs it and put it on the website. So if that's been a problem in the past, then we're just going to put a, put a line in the sand, so this is what we're going to do, this is what we're going to get it done. So I, I would anticipate that probably maybe one or two more meetings, you know, with the finance committee to, you know, maybe further discuss some of the items that we talked about, and then at that point, George would be, okay, what's up? You're not going to pay. So you guys can go travel if you want. I think it's worse traveling up to Quincy, right?
Yeah.
I think it's worse traveling to Quincy.
All right, well, we're going to move into adjourn. Second, all right, in favor?
Thanks.
Thank you.